Ms. Hurley.
This is to accept the Wacomiko County Water and Sewer Master Plan for the development of water and sewer infrastructure into unserved areas of Wacomiko County.
All right, need a motion to approve resolution number 120-2021.
To move.
Got a motion and a second by Mr. Holloway, any discussion?
I've got some questions.
Yes, sir.
This gentleman could come forward.
Mr. Bozek, can you come forward, please, probably sitting in this one with the mic?
I've been, you know, we met that day.
Yes.
And thank you for your time that day.
My pleasure, my pleasure.
There's one thing that's bothering me about this, this corridor outside of Salisbury on Old Ocean City Road, we always call that Chesapeake Heights, the Pacific Avenue.
Yeah, that's inside the bypass.
Inside the bypass, okay. You said you didn't include that in the 12, that's not included in the 12 areas, correct?
No.
Okay, because you didn't want to because of it being inside the growth area?
Of Salisbury, yes.
Of Salisbury.
Inside the bypass.
And we didn't want to, we didn't want to build competing faculties.
So, yes.
Facilities.
Overlapping.
Overlapping.
Location.
But, I don't know if it was you or Kathleen, Kathleen made the statement that they had talked to all the municipalities and none of them were willing at this time to step up, to connect to, or to further serve without annexation, if I'm right there. And I'm wondering, you know, what's Salisbury's role in this, are they, and how, I mean, I'm not, I don't have a problem with accepting the plan because, I mean, this is a plan that's going to be, gosh.
Guideline.
We'll be a lot older and grayer before we get there, but I'm wondering if, if we don't put this in our plan to do something about that area, because really, that's the area that's causing us the most grief rate now.
Agree, agree.
And if we don't put something in this plan to, to address that area and the city doesn't want to address it, what gets done?
Well, here's what gets done, so if you approve the plan and then you approve that you're going to have a water division, so you're going to have the capabilities to run water and sewer, then you're going to have to amend your water sewer comprehensive plan and put service areas in amendments. This area, Chesapeake Heights, is in the plan right now, the comprehensive water sewer plan, but it's a classification which I believe is called S6, which means that there's no timetable when it's going to get served. But we got to make our intentions known to the state and we want it to get reclassified into an area that would be something like an S2 or an S3. An S3 area, and this would apply to, say, Mardella Springs or Whitehaven or Nanico Taisken, is that it's going to be a service area that the county would provide new services. If it's an S2, it means that it's going to be provided central sewer system through an extension of an existing system. So that's a process in itself where the, I imagine, Planning and Zoning Commission, you know, among others, will come before the county council, have a process of amending that water sewer plan. I haven't done it recently, but I know it's been done routinely. It was done for the airport and any, any kind of a project such, all these projects will have to be included in the county comprehensive water sewer plan, of which the county council makes that decision, determination and votes on it, you know, in that legislative process. That gets approved by the Maryland Department of Planning. Once that's done, then the Maryland Department of Environment, if it meets their criteria, they can provide funding. The Maryland Department of Environment has already told us that it ranks very high on the list to qualify for funding, but they can't offer dollar one until it's in the water sewer plan amendment and until it's designated as a priority funding area. This area might already be designated as a priority funding area because of its being inside the bypass.
Well, I've asked for, what was it, the map of all the failing systems in that area? We haven't got that yet, right?
Not.
Okay, but we will get it, hopefully.
It's, and it's not only failing septic systems, it's non-conforming systems.
Yeah, correct, yeah.
They don't have the space and oftentimes they don't have the separation depth to, to the groundwater, so even systems that are not failing, majority are non-conforming in regards to the new onsite septic regulations.
But shouldn't, should we not, at some point in time before we, I mean, we're going to accept the plan tonight, I presume.
Step one.
But should we not get a commitment from the city of what they're going to do one way or the other before we, I mean, it just seems like we're putting the part before the horse.
I think that's going to come out in the, you know, that will come out in the, the process to amend the water sewer plan, you know, probably going to have public hearings and, and it's going to be, you know, inferred, it's going to be, you know, designated that the expectation is that the county, it's, it'll be served by the city.
Well, I mean, how about the city says no? I mean, if they say no, we're not going to do it.
The city says no, and then, you know, the county then will give, provide guidance. Actually, the county probably will not provide guidance because they don't provide guidance in terms of land use planning and political boundaries, but, you know, then, then it's a different step in terms of approaching the state and saying, well, if the city's not going to serve it and the county needs to service, will the state back the county and provide those funds, which would be, you know, more for the county doing it than it would for the city doing it, because we would then have to buy, find another discharge location and build a treatment plant, so it would add additional costs to serving that area that we wouldn't have otherwise, or be more than connecting it to the city.
Well.
But it's, you know, that's a different, that's, you know, a conversation for another day.
Yeah, well.
And it has to happen, don't, don't get me wrong, all these things have to happen.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a good question, I imagine, I think Joe's asked a good question, but I don't think, I mean, what we're voting on, the vote for the plan tonight, I just think, yeah, we need to vote for that and then.
And we start.
We're going to have that question and a whole bunch more to go.
I'm not saying we weren't going to try to accept the plan, but what I'm saying is, if you look at, if you look at the plan, it doesn't show that area, but it also doesn't show a commitment from Salisbury to serve that area, and that seems to be the area that we're having the most issues with right now. It might not be the only area, but I mean.
No, I mean, that's, 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 that's one of the biggest, the highest priorities, it's highest priorities, and it's, you know, and.
And you bring up a good point, but I don't want this plan to be sitting there and become stagnant, so what I'd like to know is how soon are we going to hire someone to oversee the water and sewer program?
First step is passing this.
Yes.
That's, that's step one.
Right, but you don't know what step two is or when it's going to happen?
Step two is approving.
If you've read, if you've read.
I'm asking for the public's.
Well, you know.
How soon, we got to hire somebody.
How are you asking?
Are we going to hire a water and sewer person to oversee the program in Wacomiko County and when?
If you, if you read, if you.
I'm asking you.
Yes, we will, at some point, the first thing we need to do is pass, is pass this resolution.
It's not that difficult of a question, anybody else have any more comments? Yes, Mr. Hastings?
Just to say that I did get a couple constituents reaching out and I wanted to pass on kind of what their thoughts or their questions that they had. One individual reached out and was very concerned about the package plants in general, and she wanted me to bring up that if we did, if there were any kind of expansion of package plants, you know, that there, we're making sure that we're not, often, many of them have failed across the state and the local government has then had to come and take them over for ones that were for profit, in this case, it's a different kind of situation. She just wanted me to pass on that, want to make sure that we are doing our best for making sure that, you know, that we're meeting our, all of our WIP obligations and then some, and also wanted to pass on, if there's any kind of thing that we, anything that we do as a county, wanted also to pass on UV light treatment as now we're starting to see so many.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Chemicals and things over in there.
That's typical, typical.
And then, and then the last thing was just making sure that we didn't have, which I heard this from a couple folks, that we're just concerned that we don't grow into the rural areas, which of course, we have priority funding areas, there is state process to make sure that we don't grow into areas, you know, and suddenly take over farmland, we're not going to be growing on septic systems like we, like we have in the past, so, and then, and the last thing that I had, a couple of folks were worried about was, or questioning about was just, you know, which I mentioned before, was, you know, kind of an equity situation. I think as we go into the future for, you know, next time we go for a comprehensive plan or even further, as we evolve this even further, making sure that certain communities, you know, communities of color or other ones aren't left out or that they are, yeah, so I said I'd pass it on, so I'm doing my job there, and, and I think you've done, it's a great plan so far and I'm excited to actually get this going, and it's going to be a really good thing for the county, so thank you.
Mr. Bozek, this is a long time coming, and I thank you and your firm for all the work that you've done on it and all the patience that you've put up with us and the many, many questions that we've asked, so thank you. Are we ready for a vote?
Yes.
All in favor, resolution number 120-2021, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye, resolution number 120-2021, pass unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Bozek, thank you, Mr. Posoda. This time for public comments, please limit all public comments to three minutes or less. If you have any presented material, you may submit it to each of the council members. No derogatory remarks, personal attacks, please limit your comments to three minutes. Do we have any public comments? Yes, sir.
Good evening, everyone, Delegate Carl Anderton, as you all know, so it looks like I'm headed to Annapolis in the morning to be in front of the Board of Public Works to seek the approval of the $700,000 grant for the pickleball courts on Harmon Field, so thank you for your decision on that. I also, I wanted to touch base on a couple of things when we spoke last month, real quick. Councilman Davis asked about the intersection where the new 711 was, I spoke with State Highway, they are monitoring that off, on behalf of his request. There was an email that I have on my phone that you were supposed to have from State Highway about Foskey Lane, as we had discussed.
I didn't get it.
Previously, it, it did not get there, that is from my office mistake, so that will be sent to you in time, you should have it back there now or if not in the morning, and asking for a letter of support for State Highway to do some geometric changes to Foskey Lane 13, dealing with crossover control. Twenty-five of the 31 accidents there in a four-year period from 2015 to 2019 were because of crossover traffic, and we had some fatalities there as well, so we're looking to eliminate, hopefully as best as possible, as best we can, those from happening again, so that email will be coming to you, and so we can talk about that in the next meeting if you're so inclined. I will be meeting with the Delmar Council, since it's in Delmar, to ask for a letter from them as well, so we can go ahead and get started on, on that straight away.
If you want to be on the next agenda, let us know and we'll talk about it on Friday.
That's your discretion, I don't know if it's needed or not.
Okay.
Why do we need to send a letter of support to ask them to come down and rectify a problem when they should be just doing it instead of us having to almost beg them with a letter of support?
I've come to learn that's.
I know it's government, but, you know, it's crazy that we have to keep sending a letter of support when they come down here.
There's a lot of things that happen.
And tell them, I mean, how many times you got to tell them every year, the same thing over and over, you know?
When I was having to fight over.
I know, I know.
Over Walston Switch and Mount Herman, they said, well, we got to see the numbers, and I said, how many numbers, how many people died? I mean, is that the numbers you want to see?
Mr. Davis, thank you for staying on top of it, and your persistence will pay off, but I do think a letter of support is in order.
Okay, thank you, so I appreciate that, I just, I would rather be fully comprehensive.
Is everybody else in agreement with a letter of support?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, very good.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely, thank you.
Do we have any more public comments? Any more public comments? Council comments?
You have one.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to rush you.
I'm on the quiet side here sometimes.
You didn't look like you were going to get up when I looked at you.
My name's Sam Parker, I'm of Wacomiko County, resident farm in Wacomiko County, and wanted to address the legislation dealing with the DAF tank. And, you know, I think, I think maybe the tank that's brought this entire conversation to the forefront may have given a bit of a black eye to, to that subject. I want to be clear that I'm not interested in, in putting a tank on my farm, I'm not in, I don't farm in an area where I think it would be appropriate, and I think that that's the, that's, that's the decision that needs to be made going forward, is where the right place is for it. I think that the material itself has a place in agriculture, I think that there are some rural areas in Wacomiko County that could support such a tank, certainly a lot of, a lot of poultry farmers in Wacomiko County grow for poultry companies that exist outside of the county. And I'm not sure that the decision to put them in an industrial zone would be the right answer either. And I'm not a big fan of, of legislation that dictates what, what can or can't happen on, on private land, but if, if legislation is necessary, I would encourage consideration to modify it, to allow it on A1 properties with a special exemption.
Okay.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, and feel free to send us an email if you wish. All right, why I asked that is because he had said some important things, and I've been hearing from farmers lately that aren't so opposed to DAF, think so. Any more public comments? Council comments?
I just want to thank.
Ms. Ackley.
I wanted to thank Mr. Parker for coming tonight and for coming to the public hearing that Planning and Zoning had, the information you gave there was very informative and a different perspective on, not necessarily what we hear from others, so I really, I appreciate that, and that's pretty much the consensus that I heard there was that it was not wanted on the industrial, in the industrial zone, so.
Thank you, Mr. Holloway.
Hey, Mr. Parker, thanks for coming in, and he did come to the Planning and Zoning meeting, but I think what we have to look, look for on this DAF issue is the unintended consequences of, of what's down the road in the farming community. We know that this one tank has brought a lot of animosity to the neighborhood that it's, it's in, it's probably not, probably wasn't the best plan, I don't think it was, I don't think it was probably explained what it was going to be fully to staff when it was approved, but we seen a map at the Planning and Zoning Commission that, that showed us where the industrial zones were in Wacomiko County, and basically, it would, it would probably zero out any kind of future tanks. I don't think we're going to see a lot of DAF coming forward in the future, I don't know that anybody else that's probably wanting to build one, especially after what's going on with this one, but it is an important part of our poultry industry of what's, what DAF has, the place DAF has in, in the production of poultry, and we do realize that, you know, poultry's our number one ag business in the county, so I think we have to move ahead with caution, we have to be diligent in, in what, what we do. I understand the poultry companies, and I've talked to others, Purdue, they've taken care of their DAF problem, I understand some of the other poultry companies are working on it, and possibly in the future they'll have, so we won't have to worry about it. I think one of the things, and I don't know, Paul's sitting in the audience, I don't know whether Paul would have any insight on this, how do we know if it's really a poultry product that's going in there, and how can we ensure that's all we're getting? And I don't know if this can be, I don't know if this can be part of the legislation.
We certainly can have this discussion when the Planning Commission, which you're on, sends their recommendation up to the council, but as I understand from what I've heard at these hearings, just as you have, the, there is inspection at the plants that bring the product together to be treated in whatever way it's treated.
Twice a year, that's kind of.
And then there's regulations about how it's applied to the land.
I think they've got that, they've bought some new equipment, we haven't had those complaints this summer, or they haven't been anywhere where, where it's generated any complaints, but, you know, we keep, what I, what I'm, what I keep hearing is how important it is to the poultry industry.
Right.
And we know that, okay, but we, do we really know what, if it's, if it's coming from the poultry industry, fine, but if it's coming from outside sources, like somewhere across the bay or from some other, you know, or, that's what's going to get us in trouble, I think, in the future, so I don't know whether we can, can we legislate that?
I think the state regulates it at the front end and the back end, and it's worth having a discussion with the state about regulating it between the plant and the tank before it gets.
Or the tank, yeah, that's, that's what we need to do.
It'll be discussed.
All right, okay, thank you.
Any more council comments? Mr. Hastings?
Well, I'm happy to see pickleball move forward and hopefully we find a space for Delmar Vipone League, but what I want to talk about, I want to also mention the, the Council of Governments idea, or the potentially bringing all of the Wacomiko County municipalities together. I think we, Ms. Hurley had sent around an email about that, trying to get a timing, get a date together, I don't know if that, where that landed at, but it does, I think that would be a really great idea and a really great opportunity, especially if we could do it.
I don't think everybody responded, did they?
We do have a date confirmed, you're talking about the meeting with the municipalities as well as our state representatives.
Yeah.
That's November the 19th at 10:00 a.m.
Oh, very good.
It should be on your calendars.
Isn't it a Friday, isn't it a Friday?
That is a Friday.
Right.
I think you had to make some phone calls, didn't you?
Perfect, good, well, I'm glad to see that happen.
We had them here.
And then the other thing was, was mentioning, also, on Saturday, I attended the funeral for Sandra Martin, which I think probably most folks in this room know who she was, you know, she, she was a Mardella graduate, but, many years ago, but she, you know, she worked with the FBI, the USDA, you know, Mission Ministry, she was just a big supporter and a lot of, just a wonderful human being, and probably the kind of person we should name a street, street after, but she was just a wonderful person, it was sad to lose her, and so, I'll leave it at that.
All right, any more council comments? Mr. Cannon.
Yes, I'd only say a couple of things, I went to Johnny Mouse fundraiser in St. Michael's and thought I could spend a day avoiding Wacomiko County business, but that didn't happen because I was approached by more than one person regarding DAF tanks, so we'll see if we can't address that in future work sessions.
And I know who was there.
Yeah.
I talked to them as well.
And it was, but it was an interesting perspective, I thought, well, let's put them in the industrial area, it's, you know, keeping out of neighborhoods, things like that, but then this individual says, well, you know, farmers may not be able to afford to buy a piece of property in the industrial area, made a lot of sense, so, well, we'll get to that, but just thought I'd share that with you.
I think that's why I asked Mr. Parker to send an email with his thoughts, because that's some new thoughts that we've been hearing the past couple of days, so thank you for coming and saying what you had to say.
With the Council of Governments, you all might remember, we used to have a Council of Governments, and it may benefit us to go back and enter the archives and find out what we can learn from that, so we don't have to read.
That's a good point, and I'm looking forward to meeting with all the municipalities. So at this time, going to recess for a closed work session, need a motion and a second to recess from legislative session to go into closed work sessions pursuant to General Provisions Article Section 3-305B1 as follows, "To discuss a personnel matter pertaining to the Department of Emergency Services to protect the confidentiality of the individuals and to review resumes for the Compensation and Allowance Commission to protect the confidentiality of the individuals involved." Need a motion and a second.
To move.
Got a motion, a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're going to recess now. I'd like to welcome everybody back reconvening into legislative session. Ms. Hurley?
For your consideration, we have resolution number 121-2021, this is to approve a Deputy Director of Emergency Services and Disaster Preparedness Agency, also known as Emergency Services. You'll note that there are two blank lines in this resolution, you'll need to make a motion to amend, to insert the name, and then make your decision with the resolution being as amended.
All right, need a motion to approve resolution number 121-2021 and a second.
To move.
Second.
Okay, do we need a motion on the amendment right now, Ms. Hurley?
Yes.
Okay, need a, a motion to amend resolution 121-1021.
Motion to amend.
Okay, a motion, and did, Ms. Ackley have a second? All in favor?
Can we just state the name of the person?
I'd like to make a motion that we amend the, the resolution to insert the name of Lorenzo R. Cropper.
Yes.
That's my motion.
Lorenzo R. Cropper, that's your motion, do we have a second with that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, good, any other discussion? All in favor of the amendment for number 121-2021, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye. All in favor, resolution number 121-2021 as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye, resolution number 121-2021 passes as amended. Congratulations, Mr. Lorenzo R. Cropper. Thank you.
You can go to work now.
It's long overdue, thank you, make sure you're at work at 7:30, you heard the boss. No coffee. All right, Ms. Hurley?
Okay, Nexus Resolution Number 122-2021, this is appointing the Compassion and Allowance Commission, and council will notice that the names have not been inserted into this resolution, you will need a motion to amend the resolution to add the names.
All right, do we have a motion to amend the resolution to add the names?
To move.
We got to make a motion on the resolution.
Okay, you got, need a motion on the resolution first.
To move.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, now is there a motion to amend the resolution of 122-2021?
Make a motion to amend the resolution 122-2021 by adding the names of Mr. John Awkward, Andrew M. Bauer, MBA, Michelle.
Chesnick.
Sue, Susan A. Cropper, I mean Cooper, I'm sorry, Susan A. Cooper, Dr. Memo Dericker, Victor H. Laws III, Mary Magnussen, Victoria Lee Mile, I hope I, Mile, I hope I pronounced that right, Sharon A. Morris, Mr. Mark Rudnick, and Michelle Wright.
Okay, got a motion to amend it with the names that Mr. Cannon read off, do we have a second?
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
Did you want to insert the name of the chair?
Chair and vice chair, yes.
Does that have to be a second motion?
No, I'll include that in my.
Just put it with the name.
Original motion.
Okay.
Mr. Dr. Memo Dericker, the council would choose as the chairman with Mr. Vic H. Laws III as the vice chairman.
Okay, thank you, and we do have a second on that. All in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye. I need a motion to approve resolution number 122-2021 as amended.
To move, second.
Any opposed, no, I'm sorry, all in favor, resolution number 122-2021 as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye, resolution number 121-2021 passes as amended. All right, at this time, I don't think there's any public comments, but we can open the floor to public comments. Need a motion to adjourn.
To move.
All right, need a motion to adjourn from legislation, legislative session to go into open work session, we have to do that again, Ms. Hurley?
No, because we recessed last.
Okay, all right, need a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, now we're in open work session with Maple Dam Conservation Wetland Mitigation Bank Agreement of the Sale of Wetland Mitigation Credits, Mr. Tony Rudy, the airport manager. Please introduce yourselves for the record.
Tony Rudy, airport manager.
Paul Wilbur, county attorney.
Welcome.
So just to give you a little background on this, this is in relation to the runway extension project, currently, excuse me, currently, we're working on some wetland permitting issues, this will take about a year to sort through with the state and the Army Corps. We will be, there were wetlands identified in the area that need to be mitigated for the extension project, and we have a good handle on the amount of acreage that needs to be mitigated. to be mitigated. So there is, there's a couple of ways we can mitigate. We could build our own wetlands, which is a rather lengthy process, rather expensive, or we could use this bank that's in place already, and they've got land available. However, there could be some other interest by the time we get ready to purchase this, which would obviously lessen the amount of land available. So what's available right now and what will be available in the coming months will satisfy our needs just barely, so that we lock in now with this agreement. And there is a stipulation with funding becoming available either through local funds or FAA or state funds, so that's, that's...
Okay.
...the agreement there.
Now, this bank is in Dorchester County?
Yes.
Okay.
So this is really the only bank in this vicinity that would satisfy our needs.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Mr. Holloway?
No.
I'd seen you looking, I didn't want to end this without any comments.
We're good.
You good? All right, anything else? Ms. Hurley?
Have we done this before? Is this, this is new to me? Is this the, are you aware of any?
By understanding, the county has purchased credits from this bank in the past.
Have we? Yeah.
We can check out that.
I was just curious.
I don't know.
I'm trying to think.
Yeah, we've, some in Somerset County one time.
Yeah, we've purchased ones before, but actually, I think it was in, I remember us doing some in the bank, there's a, there's a bank in Wycomico, out on a, oh geez, off Snow Hill Road, can't think of the name of the road right now. For some reason, I think we did something...
Is it a wetland bank, though?
Yeah, yeah.
These are wetlands, which is different than a forest.
It's not a wetland bank, yeah, that's a port bank.
These are really unusual, these wetland banks.
I think we did one in Somerset.
We can investigate that.
I think we did one in Somerset County.
Yeah, the airport, there was a project, it was many years ago, that was down by, oh, down across the river from Whitehaven in Somerset County. But we did, we did explore that to see if there's any more available lands there, and it's just not the case.
If you found this and you think the price is right?
And it is needed, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's essential.
Oh, no doubt. Now, where do you think the money will come from?
Well, it could be...
I know you mentioned FAA, but it didn't sound like you really knew if they would give us money or not.
Well, so we have a total estimate, or estimated amount for the full project, which includes, you know, the wetlands, the construction, the design, all of that. A lot of this is going to depend when the federal funds come in, and state funds will usually, we usually follow that. But there's a certain amount the county's going to have to bond, or, excuse me, bond for. Chances are, the federal money will come in later in the project, so the bond money would probably be used for this upfront. But we won't know that until, probably until maybe June of next year, when the FAA typically releases their funding, grant funding for projects like this.
Ms. Hurley or Mr. Mitchell, do we need a public hearing on this?
I don't believe we do.
Mr. Rudy, how was the amount of 119,790? How did you, how did we come to that amount, that figure?
Dollar figure, it's based on a, basically a dollar amount per square foot or per acre.
I'm sorry?
It's based on a dollar amount either per square foot or per acre.
In fact, I had the same question, because it seemed like a lot, but apparently, these wetland banks are few and far between, so they're obviously naming their price, these wetland credits.
So what happens is the developer takes this land, makes it into a viable wetland, and it used to be a five-year process, they had to prove that it's sustainable, and I believe now it's into a 10-year process. So there's a, there's a big investment in the land. It's not cheap to build these things.
So they sit on that until somebody needs to come along and say, I guess, we end up purchasing it so that it can no longer be used for any other purpose at all, right? That's the idea?
It's wetlands forever, I think, yes. And it's been manufactured wetlands, as I understand it.
Actually, the state has a program, well, the state wants you to buy...
We're all in the wrong business.
...available wetlands, first and foremost. After those are all exhausted, they have an in lieu fee where you could purchase, and then they will develop wetlands over the years. But they haven't done this in a long time, and their, their fee per acre is more than this would cost, so, but that wouldn't satisfy the federal requirements either.
Right.
So, one question, where do we go from here? And second question, you touched on something, if it's available, it sounds like there may be a rush, which I don't like doing that.
Well, no, what I'm saying is, if all these wetlands are exhausted, the state would allow you to purchase through them, but that would only satisfy state requirements. There are both state and Army Corps requirements, and these actually satisfy both.
So where do we go from here, Ms. Hurley?
Yep, before we, before we leave this, I mean, I'm still struggling a little bit with this, with that price per acre.
You should go appraise it, Bill, and just knock it right down for them.
Well, one reason I'm struggling with that, I mean, we've sort of been involved with these in the past. I have not seen that kind of number. That's why I'm just, I'm struggling with that.
So the initial number was slightly lower, and being that we're locking this in for a period of more than a year, where he's got a whole lot of this land for us solely and not for any other use, he can't sell this, he has some risk in that. I think he had a risk concerning, you know, capital gains going up in the future and other things, so he was looking at a higher price per acre. We kind of negotiated somewhere in the middle.
I guess, I guess I'm just looking for the justification for that number.
Because he's got us over a barrel.
Yeah, I think I would call it supply and demand.
I know he had two questions, but I also say that it's the only thing that's available and they can make their price.
That's the cost of making this.
That's highway commercial...
Robbery. Robbery.
Well, but it's highway commercial price per acre number.
Yeah.
Maple Dam Road's a rural area of wetlands.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, I'm just, you know, I mean, first of all, I'd just like to see the justification, I mean...
Doesn't he have an appraisal?
That's what I'm saying, right, is there, you know, were there appraisals done on record somewhere for the mitigation bank? Something to justify that? I mean, I'm just...
Yeah, he's, he's the only game in town, like I said, the state and Lufy is even high.
I'll tell you what, I mean, do we have to, well, I don't know.
What happened to our, our process of having two appraisals and all that?
Joe, can you use the mic?
So how about our, how we usually have to have two appraisals on any purchase, land purchases? Didn't we follow that this time?
As I understand it, this was supply, demand. This was the only supply, and we needed to fill a need in order to do the runway.
I know we need it, and I know we're probably going to have to pay it, but do we step outside the bounds here of what we usually do?
Let me ask this.
I know that.
What do they tell us exactly we have to, do they tell us we have to purchase this from a wetland mitigation bank, or do they tell us we have to, we got to somewhere designate, you know, 13.74 acres of wetlands?
Well, we have to mitigate the area that we're disturbing.
Right, I mean, I realize that.
Either means purchasing it, we could develop our own wetlands somewhere, but...
Well, that's what I'm kind of saying, you can go here and buy, for this money, you can buy lands and, you know, do a wetland project for, for a fraction of that money.
But it's making, it's developing that land, making it viable, and guaranteeing over that period of time and in perpetuity that it's going to stay a wetland.
Right.
That's the struggle.
Right, well, most wetlands are, I mean, when you do a wetland project, I mean, it's a wetland project in perpetuity, and, you know, that's why it changes it somehow, but once it's designated for that, I mean, is that an option?
I think by the time it would take to do that, we're probably talking years.
Well, for that, for that money, I'll find you somebody tomorrow. I'll have them lined up at the door. But, but, I mean, yeah, I do kind of, I mean, you know, I don't want to sort of be difficult here, and I know we're at the very end of our meeting and everything, but that does not make sense.
It is expensive, no doubt, and if there were other, other options that...
I mean, if it was $20,000 an acre or something, I'd be like, oh, okay, you know, but...
What process did you use in finding this?
So use your microphone, please.
So what process did you use in finding this? I mean, did...
I mean, it's a known quantity, it's one that's, that's in our area that will satisfy our needs. There's, there are others in other parts of the state or other parts of the country, but...
Are they cheaper?
It needs to be, well, no, the fact is, it needs to be in this area, I think, for the watershed that it's going to.
See, that's the part you have to add on to. So this, the real cost, from what little I know about it, is, the challenge is, this, these are usually manufactured properties where you have to, you don't want something that's going to be in a, that is in a tidal area where the land eventually goes away or roads away. This is something that you would put, you know, you would, you essentially create this kind of a program. You want that to be in the same watershed, you have to then maintain it for all, for, well, in perpetuity, you have to have a land manager. So there's, there's these associated costs, that's why the, I mean, there is another option, of course, which is fee and lieu, but that, that is higher. Now, that being said, to Bill's point, I think, you know, there, it would be interesting to see, you know, a government like our, you know, I don't know, the state allows current state government to go through that process, or county government to go through that process to be able to create our own individual wetland mitigation bank, but that might be, that could be helpful in a future situation. It's not like Wycomico County doesn't have, you know, a lot of land that we could use for such a situation, so. But this is really where we need the private, this is where we need, you know, this is capitalism. We need private industry to jump in and actually create more options to lower the price, but we still have this long time carrying cost. But I, you know, I was surprised by that, that amount too, but, you know. Going forward, I, obviously, this is something you'd probably want to, there are a few options, from what I understand, from talking to Ben Alder, these kind of folks, and he's...
Well, this is a work session, where do you want to go from here?
Well, I guess one question, can you get back to us regarding a, I mean, is fee and lieu an option?
Like I said, it will satisfy the state's needs, but not the, not the Army Corps' requirements.
Army Corps, Army Corps doesn't give us the fee and lieu option, only the state?
They, yeah, from what I understand, they don't have, they don't have that option.
And Mr. McCain, you don't sound like you're okay with it.
Well, I'm not sold on it.
Would be any chance, talking to, any chance talking to federal legislators about some kind of option out of this, Paul? Or, you know, getting Congress office, Congressman's office, and seeing if there's any way to work around it?
We, we obviously haven't explored that.
I don't think you're going to get out of mitigating...
No, yeah, we won't get out of it.
I'm not talking about getting out of it, I'm just...
It's, I think your question is, where can we mitigate? Is there a cheaper alternative?
That's what I was going to say, you know, can we explore the option of, because of this, of being able to expand our search of, you know, because I know they require that regional requirement, but at the end of the day, if this is what's going on in your region, and you got somebody, we can go to, you know, somewhere, there's one in Caroline County or something, that might be outside of our quote region, but it might be $20,000 an acre. Well, if that's the case, I think we need to be addressing that with somebody.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think you're going to find them that cheap, frankly, but...
I mean, do you have numbers, do you have numbers from any of those?
Part of this was discussions with, with MDE. MDE is the one that approves, approves these banks. Basically, they're the ones who said, you know, this is, this is the one we can use.
Do we have numbers from any of those other banks that might be outside of our region? Just, I'm just curious what those price per acres are in those other banks? Can you get back to us with that?
I could, I could certainly try to look for that.
You do that, and we'd be ready for the next meeting, two weeks.
Sure.
Do you have to follow what MDE dictates as far as which banks are acceptable and which aren't?
Yes.
So, and you have done that, you vetted all the other banks as far as...
Well, this is the only one that's available, that MDE says we can use, so...
It's the only one MDE says we can use.
Yeah, we might have to have the conversation with, Mr. Grumbles might need to come back and sit in front of us again if, you know, they're doing this.
MDE's part involved, you know, in this process, they're the ones who, who approve the transaction between us and Maple Dam.
It doesn't sound to me like it's the MDE's problem, it's causing our problems, it's...
It doesn't sound to me like it's MDE that's causing our problems, it's the Army Corps.
Well, it's both, they're both kind of in this whole process.
We need more land, we need more individuals to be able to jump into this style of business. It has to be in the watershed that you're in or within a neighboring watershed, so we need more folks to actually jump in to provide more options, but, and maybe, by the way, Nick Rice, I don't know if he has any skills or helpful, but he, obviously, is purchasing agent, not that I'm suggesting anything, but, you know, I don't know if he has a, he probably doesn't have any more skills better than you do, and you're just following MDE, but...
Did you research this out, or did one of our engineering firms?
We've had our, our airport consultants, we have environmental specialists on staff.
Okay.
So they were working, they were working together with MDE.
Okay.
And with Maple Dam as well.
All right. Everybody else okay with it?
Game it down.
And I would like to see what Bill said, the other counties, see if there's, what some of their prices are, because if this is, this is all we have in this area, we may need to go higher up to see if we can branch out to the counties. I mean, the demand's there, but supply's not, so...
All right, can you get back to us, see what you can do about finding other available land?
Yeah, I'll get some information for you on that. I'm just, I'm not the environmental specialist.
Yeah, and all you have to do is tell them there's a couple of council members that are questioning it, and I think it's a...
We all get the process and why we're doing this, like, we get all that, but that number does not make sense, you know, even remotely, so, that's the, you know, that's our, that's our hangup, yeah.
Are you against any type of particular timeframe here?
Yeah, December 31st, aren't you? Or was that just arbitrary, that settlement date?
We, we want to get, we want to lock this agreement in place as soon as we can, so no one else can jump in and purchase credits.